I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 11th School Board Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you pull the board, please?
Absolutely. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hellerback?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Excellent. At this time, I would like to invite our wonderful firefighting program to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody, please stand. We're probably going to have to turn this way.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. You may be seated. I would like to thank our 12 students from our class, our firefighting class, Ethan Abbott, David Brady, Matthew Brown, Noah Culver, Donald Fisher, Jocelyn Holmes, Dylan Jackson, Matthew Lewis, Malick O. Mariana, Brandon Tremblay, Zachary Wathern, and Grant Whitley, and our instructor Scott Strain, and of course, our Fire Chief, Cardello. We will get to hear more about that in our special presentation. However, let's first move on to agenda approval. It's your motion. Second.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I would like to add 4.02, Special Presentation.
Is that okay with the motion makers?
Sure, yes.
Yes.
The special, yeah.
Can't ask? Thank you. All those in favor of the amended motion to add a special presentation of 4.02, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We're going to start with our first special presentation this evening. Chief Cardello and your team, if you all, and Mr. Nichols, come on up.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner, it's my honor to have the privilege to introduce the first class of the firefighting program which we began this school year. At this time, I'm going to show a highlight video that our video broadcasting, three students from North Stafford High School put together to give you a little glimpse into what they've been doing at the firefighting program.
USA Today reported in January of 2019, being a firefighter is among the three most dangerous jobs in America, along with police officers and electricians. But no one would conclude from this that there should be no firefighters. When Stafford County Public Schools reintroduced the firefighter program to the curriculum this year, that's exactly what they had in mind, improving the safety of a dangerous profession by providing high-quality training for people interested in pursuing it.
Firefighting is an inherently dangerous, ultra-hazardous, unavoidably dangerous activity, and my job is to not have your child be safe, but to teach them things they need to help keep themselves safe.
Students in the firefighter program reflect their instructor's emphasis on safety in everything they do, but they'll also tell you that thrill-seeking is not what the program is about, and it's not what attracted them to it either.
I like helping people. I've always liked helping people. So it's more of a giving back to my community kind of thing.
So helping people and making a difference in the community is among the most common reasons why students signed up for the program in the first place, but it's not the only quality of a successful firefighting student.
In the fire program, you have to be able to make decisions very quickly, you have to be a good leader, you have to be hard-working because you can't give up, you know, a life's depend on you.
It's very physically and mentally demanding. That's something that you have to be ready for.
Students in the firefighting program would be quick to say that they find the field experiences the most exciting part of the class, but they'd also say that no one should go into the program thinking there's nothing to learn in a classroom.
Some kids are better at taking tests, some are better at doing presentations, or research, or stuff like that. So we look at that knowledge aspect, which is half of it, and we grade you on that. And then we look at that other aspect, too. So you're graded on your skills and your practicals. So we look at pass/fail, not like, oh, that was a 90% ladder throw, or that was an 80%, no, pass/fail.
So it's clear that before they go into the field, students in this program spend important time in the classroom thinking about what they're about to do. And yet, when they get out there and get suited up, what they learn often goes well beyond what they studied in the textbook.
When we were in the maze, it's pitch black in there, and you have to feel around to try to get your way out.
So it was kind of scary. I've never been a kid who likes the dark.
It's really hard, it gets really tight, it's pitch black, you can't see anything.
I end up learning that if I shut my eyes, if I take that light away myself, I feel more in control of what's going on.
Where a lot of people, when they hit a very stressful circumstance, hit the panic button, they can't function, they don't make good decisions. We teach you how to grow yourself, as well as deal with that stress.
But listen, for those of you thinking that firefighting is only for men, think again. The lessons in this program are not gender-specific any more than they require gender-specific abilities.
I feel like it's a stereotype, like you got to be the big, strong guy to do some of these things, and it's not. Nothing here's that hard that a girl can't do it. It's all technique, it's how you do it.
So learning to work as an effective member of a team is central to the firefighter program, and most students in this program would tell you that's what they'd miss most if this program wasn't here anymore.
I come here and I, every day, and I feel as if I've accomplished something.
One of the hardest qualities to develop in students going to school is a passion for learning. Experts will tell you that passion-based learning requires that teachers and students engage in meaningful, real-world tasks that they both believe make a difference. The firefighter program in Stafford County Public Schools is without a doubt an example of effective, passion-based learning, which is a good thing, because practicing one of the most dangerous professions on the planet demands attention to detail. For North Six News, I'm Thomas Hinkler.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Chief Cardello. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner. Thanks for supporting the program and for giving us a few minutes to talk to you about it tonight. You've had the introductions of the students. The only one we're missing tonight is Deputy Chief Murphy. He's in charge of our Training Division. He couldn't be here tonight. So although we received approval for this program, for this current school year, we've been preparing for it for years. Our training staff took field trips to other localities who have similar programs to ensure that the program that we created would meet the needs of our community and would be the best it could be. As a result of this preparation, I'm happy to report that things are going very, very well. We've had a few minor issues, but working with Mr. Nichols and Ms. Robinson and other staff, nothing that we couldn't overcome. The program, as you know, started off under pressure. It was approved after students had already selected, or begun the selection process for the classes for the school year. So we only had a few weeks to advertise the program, collect applications, select students, provide information to students and parents, and get commitments from the students. Ms. Robinson and Deputy Chief Murphy worked tirelessly during those few weeks to get everything ready to go. We had planned for 20 students, but we were only able to get 12 due to the time constraints. One requirement of this program is that each of these students affiliates and joins one of our volunteer stations. This is necessary because it would be virtually impossible to master the advanced concepts that they learn in class in just 20 hours a week. For perspective, our Career Recruit Academies, they go Monday through Friday for eight hours a day for six months. So these students spend time each week with their volunteer companies, practicing their skills. In addition to reinforcing what they learn in class, students, these students have become part of our Fire and Rescue family. So when the program started, well, first, the rundown of the high schools. We have one Colonial Forge, five Stafford, two in Mountain View, three in North Stafford, and one in Brookpoint. These students have put in more than 4,000 hours of training to date, and our instructors have put in more than that amount of time in class and logistical preparation and in instructional time. Master Technician Strain has been instrumental in this process. His job is far from a seven-to-three daytime job, a lot of after-hours evenings, preparing curriculum and making sure the logistics are just right, and a lot of weekend work as well. So what have these students done so far? So they have certifications in hazardous materials operations, CPR, and first aid. The topics they've covered thus far, personal protective equipment, firefighter health and safety, radio communications, hose line and ladder evolutions, fire extinguishers, fire behavior, fire streams, ventilation, ropes and knots, fire cause and origin. What they have coming up for the rest of the program, they're going to study search and rescue, May Day firefighter rescue operations, which is, they're going to be taught how to save our own whenever firefighters get in trouble. They also have a few live burn dates where they'll actually be going into live fire, and their certification testing at the end of the program. Tentatively, the students are scheduled to graduate May 21st, and they'll finish the program with NFPA firefighter one, firefighter two, May Day firefighter down, hazardous materials operations, and CPR. When the program started, and these students will attest, July 12th, while their friends and even some of their families were on vacation, they were in a two-week hazardous materials class. And as the title, probably you can tell it's riveting. It's a tough class, and they did great, and they all came through. So far in the program, we've had two minor injuries, neither required any hospital time or mistime from school or class. Funding, so Stafford County Public Schools committed $125,000 to the program. To date, we've spent about $45,000, and obviously, that's because we have about half the students that we planned for. So we believe that we're certainly going to fall short, come in under budget this year, but next year, hopefully, we hope to get 20 students, and then we'll be able to fully use the budget. Stafford County Public Schools purchased their personal protective equipment, so that stays with the program. So when these students leave, the gear will stay, and if the people are the same size that come in next year, they'll be able to use it, and that's money we don't have to spend. So that's one thing we have to look forward to. The program is doing well for its first year, but looking forward, we would envision a two-year program that incorporates the EMT program, as well as the high school fire program. That way, when students graduate, they are ready to be hired just about anywhere. The goals we set for this program were simple. We wanted to provide students with a career path in the Fire and Rescue Service, and we wanted to infuse our volunteer system with new, young, and eager volunteers. Upon successful completion of this program, students will have the certifications and basic skills that will make them eligible to enter a career fire academy, or become a volunteer firefighter virtually anywhere in the United States. Now, we would love nothing more than to hire them as they graduate this program, because hiring Stafford County residents is important to our future success as a community and as a department. But we know that there are students that will choose another career path. Our goal for those students would be to retain them as voluntary firefighters in our system. We have many successful volunteers in our system currently who are in different career paths. This program is about opening doors for our students. We all know how important it is to provide vocational training and technical skills that students need to enter the workforce. So whether we hire them, or they're active volunteers for years to come, it's a win-win situation. And I would just like to point out that two of the current students are in our current, we're hiring a class in July, and they are in the process to be hired upon graduation. So don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but that's successful. Can I answer any questions?
Are there any questions from the board members?
I just have a quick statement. I know at least one of them is a chip off the old block. Hi, Mr. Tremblay.
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Yeah, I just had a quick question in terms of the, you said that they're there eight hours a day, Monday through Friday?
The Career Recruit Academy, the people we hire full-time.
Okay, I was like, whoa, how'd they get their math done? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say my sister was a EMT, and then an engineer with California Department of Forestry, so you go get them.
If I could just make a quick comment, I'm so glad that the board, we were able to fund this in partnership with our Board of Supervisors. I hope you go and tell them what a great job they did as well. Just reinforcing that that investment was a great investment. And I would like to invite our firefighters, I'd like you all to stand up and be recognized by everybody who's here, please. Sometimes it's hard to be in the first class of anything.
You mentioned that you had some, not problems necessarily, but the recruitment was small. How are you recruiting, and is there a way that you could probably get some more students?
We're turning through the schools, and as you can imagine, after students had already picked their selections for the next school year, then we told them about this program. So students had already committed to things, and I think in the past, the program was on the table and off the table, and maybe some didn't believe.
So this time, you will have a little bit more time to do that.
We believe that we're going to have a full house next time.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for making the time, and I know your busy schedule, but it's always wonderful to see the investment. All right, moving on on our agenda to add on item 4.02. On behalf of the board, I would like to read a proclamation this evening. This is one that is on paper and everything, not done by our clerk, because we wanted it to be a surprise for our clerk. So even if it's on the piece of paper, so Dr. Kizner and I now know that we are not, we, how much we really appreciate our clerk. So I would like to, it's a proclamation to recognize February 17th through 21 as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. The reason is because by the time we have our next meeting, we will have already passed that week, and we wanted to make sure that we recognized Missy and Angie publicly. So I'm going to read this through, but everybody remember, you have till the week of the 17th to reach out to our clerks. Whereas School Board Clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas School Board Clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the School Board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts. And whereas School Board Clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of the county, as may be required by the School Board. And whereas School Board Clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent. Whereas School Board Clerks and the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending School Board meetings and functions. Whereas School Board Clerks join with School Board Members to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential. And whereas School Board Clerks provide an invaluable service for School Board Members and Superintendents, the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the Stafford County School Board joins the V S B A in recognizing the many and varied contributions of our School Board Clerks. So therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby recognizes the week of February 17th through 21 as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and encourages the public and employees of Stafford County Public Schools to acknowledge the great work of our clerk, Ms. Melissa Hall, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Angela Mergo, for the board members, school divisions, staff, and students, parents, and citizens of Stafford County. And we would like to thank Missy and Angie. Does this mean I can have that week off? No. So we have a little present for you, and of course, you'll have to wait until the 17th as well, so.
To open it?
Yes. Well, you don't have to wait that long.
Thank you very much.
So we would like to just thank Missy for all the help and hours. You are very welcome. And this one, we even signed without your help. So there are some things we do without Missy's help, but it was a lot more difficult. So our next report is our high school class size report. So I will have our presenters come on forward, Mrs. Cale and Dr. Nichols.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Kizner. Tonight, Dr. Nichols and I will be presenting the 2019-2020 High School Class Size Report. Stafford County Public Schools High School Class Size Report is based on student enrollment in core and elective classes as of September 30th, 2019. The following high school information is included, average class size for each school, and frequency of class sizes. When we started analyzing our comparison reports from last year, we recognized inconsistencies in the way the data was categorized. We found some electives were inadvertently included with the core data for 2018-2019. Consequently, it impacted the total number of core and elective classes. As a result, we couldn't accurately compare this year's data to last year's data. Even though we have provided comparison charts in the past, we're unable to provide correct comparisons this year. As we have evolved in our data collection process and course identification, we feel strongly our data will be comparable moving forward. Currently, the division is also in the process of establishing a data advisory committee to set data protocols and standardize data practices to minimize inconsistencies moving forward. Throughout this presentation, it is important for you to view our current core and elective class sizes through the lens of our school administrators and scheduling staff. As they attempt to balance the needs of students and capabilities of their staff, the reality is that creating and balancing schedules is a complex process and requires a focus of continuous improvement. Please keep in mind, our school administrators strive to meet the varying needs of all of our students' scheduling requests. The scheduling process is complicated, of course, by numerous singleton classes and diverse program requirements. For example, some courses are only offered once as a singleton to ensure students have the opportunity to participate in the upper levels of World Language, CTE, JROTC, AP, CGS, DE, and IB. In addition, there are elective singletons that create challenges to meet individual requests, which can cause a ripple effect when scheduling core classes. Got to love it. All right, we will begin with our core class report. These courses include English, Mathematics, Social Studies, Science, and World Language. Based on the average daily membership as of September 30th, 2019, the total number of high school students was 9,725. The high school student enrollment increased by 228 students since September 30th, 2018. The average division core class size is 24.8, ranging from 24.4 at Colonial Forge High School and Stafford High School, to 25.5 at Mountain View High School. Please note that the totals do not include two FTEs that were added after September 30th. As of this date, one math position was filled in January, and the other position has not been filled with a qualified applicant, and those two FTEs were going to Mountain View High School. This chart displays class span data. There are 352 classes representing 20% of our total classes, with 20 or fewer students, ranging from 43 at Brookpoint High School to 83 at North Stafford High School. There are 788 classes representing approximately 45% of our total classes, with 21 to 27 students, ranging from 130 at North Stafford High School to 192 at Colonial Forge High School. There are 618 classes, representing 35% of our total classes, with 28 or more students, ranging from 108 at Colonial Forge High School to 152 at Mountain View High School. And just to note, that we have in 33 or more classes, for example, math, there were 20 classes, English, five, science, four, and social studies, nine, also World Language, five. Again, this graph displays that the majority of our classes have 21 to 27 students, which are optimal class sizes. Next, we will examine the elective class size report. Electives include CTE, English, for example, journalism, creative writing, et cetera, fine and performing arts, health and PE, science, for example, human anatomy and biomedical, and history, social studies, for example, global issues, sociology, and psychology. The following data points are not included in the high school elective class size report to ensure proper representation of elective class sizes. For example, self-contained classes, because size is due to compliance requirements. Inclusion classes, these sections have been included in the core class size report. Virtual classes, these classes may include numerous sections in one class due to the individual nature of the online course. An independent study, these classes may also include numerous sections in one class. The average division elective class size is 25.2, ranging from 24.6 at Stafford High School to 26.3 at Mountain View High School. This year, there are 146 elective classes with 15 or fewer students, ranging from 23 at Mountain View High School to 34 at Stafford High School. There are 904 elective classes with 16 to 32 students, ranging from 145 at Mountain View High School to 216 at Colonial Forge High School. There are 151 elective classes with 33 or more students, ranging from 17 at Colonial Forge High School to 44 at Mountain View High School. The elective classes with 33 or more are mostly in fine and performing arts, physical education, CTE, and art, excuse me, JROTC. For example, fine and performing arts, there were 24 classes, PE 91, CTE 13, et cetera. As the board continues to focus on the staffing standards, we look forward to the future possibilities. Our areas of focus will continue to be the effective use of FTEs and scheduling practices to meet the needs of all students. As always, we appreciate the board's support and efforts to reduce all of our class sizes in the future. As you know, it takes a team, and special thanks to Dr. Nichols, Joseph Hernandez, and Tara Vee for the help with this report.
Are there any questions, or who wants to get us started?
I have one. The average class size report 2019-2020, so you're looking backwards at this point?
2019-2020, yes. We're looking at this based on September 30th data.
Okay.
But it's this school year. Yes.
All right, are there any other comments or questions?
So my backup question is like, what do you want us to know? I know you thanked us, and you showed us a lot of numbers. What do you want us to know that was done, that is great, and that we want to keep going? Like, I didn't hear that part. What about these, like, you know, comparing the standards and what you're showing us? Give us the story.
Of course, we'd always like to lower some of our high class sizes, and of course, Dr. Nichols is going to come up and share, too. Some of the issues we have is nothing that you don't know. Sometimes it's hard, we'd want to add more math, but we can't find math applicants, that type of thing. But certainly, as always, we continue to look and continue to try to do that.
Did you have something?
Yes, I was wondering, why is there such a discrepancy in the number of classes when you have, I'm looking at the core, and you have 123 at Mountain View, down to 15 at?
Colonial.
Colonial Forge? Thank you.
I believe the simple, I believe the quick answer for that is that when you look at Mountain View's enrollments, they were scheduled, they were projected at 1857. So we did staffing based on projections. They weren't really gaining maybe five kids in their projections. So we didn't look at adding staff to them. They came in, as the summer kept growing, they went up to 19, they grew 128 students from that time that we didn't account for. So we ended up giving them, at this point today, they have 4.75 FTEs were added, and a lot of those class sizes are high in math, because we can't find math. So we're, instead of hiring math teachers, we're doubling up, where they're taking an extra block. extra block because we're not finding the qualified individuals.
Well, Mr., Dr. Nichols knows that this is one for me. I think that it goes to, and I made this point also in our work session, of why it's so critically important to, and I know we have a new team in, to be looking at these projections. Because at Mountain View, I calculated it was 126 that we didn't have, and, you know, I have grave concern that next year, that we're going to lose three students at Mountain View High School. I think that's crazy, but I have made that very clear to everybody. But also, we have Brookpoint going up, you know, 35 students. We had Stafford High School going up 31. Then we did have some loss at two of the other schools, and I'm not saying I want to reshuffle, you know, people, but it's a concern to me that, as we really drill down into these numbers, it doesn't just have an impact on the stu-, it has a huge impact on hiring. The sooner we know we need students, so I am going to just make a broad statement that I truly don't believe Mountain View is going to lose three students between today and next September, next August. But, and I hope that we are looking at, what are these trends, and, you know, is there some AP, is there something we're missing because we want it to be better? And I'm, if this isn't to dispute it, it's to say, what did we learn from it? And I think that is a learning experience that, because there's some things too that are going on that may push these numbers, that I really think we have to be continually looking at them. But Dr. Kizner and I have talked about this, you know, even in the spring, what are we trending? Because if, there are certain neighborhoods that are churning out houses weekly, and as they get to the summer, I just, I just don't want us to be flat-footed of not hiring as early as possible. Because even when we started here, I know we have, you know, 50-some vacancies, can we just try and hire as many as possible? So, it's really just more a comment, but that, how we can work more with our planning folks, because this does impact, I think, class size, not just at the elementary, but it's everywhere, and I think we could probably make the same argument probably in middle school as well. And so, I just think that's something, for me, let's use the data that we have if we think it needs to be reexamined, then let's do that, because I think that's in the best interest of our kids. So, it's more of a comment. Thank you all very much for bringing these to our attention, and as Ms. Young said, if there are specific proposals, I know we've certainly talked, Dr. Kizner, if something really jumps out, mine would be, as earlier, the better we can hire. So, all right. Next, we're going to be moving on to the Public Budget Hearing and Citizen Comments. These are actually two separate portions of the agenda. However, the same rules apply, so I figure, let's read the rules once. They apply to both with the three-minute. There will be, the first part will be just on the public hearing on the budget, so those would be the comments you will be making on the budget, then there'll be a second opportunity on general citizen comments. People have signed up for both sections of that. I will call those names first, then if you still have not had that opportunity to speak, you may speak after that. So, like I said, I'm going to have Ms. Hollerback read the invitation once, but we're going to start first with the public hearing on the budget after she concludes, then I will read those names first.
Okay. Individuals wishing to comment to the Board on the subject of the proposed fiscal year 21 budget may do so at this time. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the person, if the spokesperson represent an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairperson reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against Division employees or Division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in SCPS Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
All right. Like I said, that's going to apply to both sections. So, first, we're going to start with the budget. I have five people signed up. As your name is called, if you want, if you're in the middle of the row, go ahead and stand up and off to the side so you can just follow the person in front of you. First, I have Victoria Basile, then Logan Felenstein, Michelle Wickman, Christian Peabody, and Dana Brown. So, we'll start with these five, and come on down. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, School Board and Dr. Kizner. My name is Victoria Basile. I live at 127 Water Ridge Lane in Stafford County. I represent the World Languages in Stafford County. I teach Spanish I and Spanish for Heritage Learners at Shirley High Middle School. I have seven years of teaching experience at high schools and middle schools. Although my profession is teaching Spanish, I have interpreted dental clinics, law offices, technology classes, shoe stores, and coffee shops. Each time, I feel like I have a superpower that no one else around me has, and each time, I feel so much joy by having helped someone in need. Research supports that children learn languages easier than adults. For this reason, countries throughout Europe and Asia begin introducing second languages as early as kindergarten. According to the American Council on Teaching Foreign Languages, second language acquisition boosts problem-solving skills, critical thinking, and listening while improving memory, concentration, and the ability to multitask. Currently, every middle school in Stafford County has one Spanish teacher, while three middle schools share one French teacher. Five middle schools share two Latin teachers, and two middle schools share one German teacher. Eight additional World Language teacher positions within our middle schools would improve second language acquisition throughout all of Stafford County public schools by offering greater accessibility to a variety of languages. By offering more Level One courses to middle schools, students will have more opportunities to reach higher levels of World Language during high school, which would ultimately expand our countywide AP courses, increase governor school participation, mean more seals of biliteracy on diplomas, and higher college enrollment. An increase in middle school foreign language courses allows learners to establish a strong foundation that will carry with them throughout high school and beyond. Additional World Language teaching positions would help students become global citizens by exposing them to cultures other than their own. Teachers would be available to teach new and exciting electives like the World Language Exploratory Course, which allows students the unique opportunity to sample the four different languages offered in our school system before picking one or two to pursue throughout their academic careers. Finally, eight more teachers and more language courses would provide heritage Spanish speakers with the opportunity to become trilingual. When students make connections in my classroom and build Spanish sentences and say, hey, I understood what you just said, I feel like I've transferred a bit of my superpower to someone else, and the world needs more people who have that superpower. We can do that here in Stafford County. So, thank you for your time and consideration. Gracias, merci, y danke.
Thank you. I guess I have superpowers. And so does Trish. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Logan Felenstein. My address is 1 Short Circle, Fredericksburg, Virginia. I am the Director of Orchestras and Choirs at Drew Middle School. I come to you tonight to advocate for the new middle school music teaching positions outlined in the proposed budget. As a music educator, I am always going to advocate for arts curriculum for our students. Most importantly, I'm going to advocate for student learning experiences because I believe it is our responsibility to offer a variety of courses for our students that align to their interests and also allow them to explore topics and learn skills related to careers in the performing arts field. It is not every student's wish to perform in an ensemble such as band, chorus, or orchestra. Our students are exposed to music nearly every day. The newly proposed music electives, such as Music Technology and World Music, are clear avenues to help students develop lifelong connections to the world of performing arts. I believe our students deserve to be introduced to a world of possibilities while in school. In addition to the new, the new exciting music courses that could potentially be offered, we also have a problem with access. If students do not select band or orchestra as a sixth grader, they do not have the opportunity to enter into band or orchestra as a beginner at any other level. Another way to put this is that students cannot enter in seventh grade because that course is taught at an intermediate level. Our current staffing and current middle school schedule simply hasn't allowed for it in the past. However, by hiring more music teachers, we will be able to offer a beginning-level course that seventh and eighth-grade students could enter and begin learning a band or string instrument. In order to truly be able to offer these important opportunities, there's a large need for hiring new music teachers. Our current middle school music teachers teach anywhere from three up to six different courses. That's right, six different curriculums. Our middle school music teachers already have large numbers of students with several teaching over 200 students per week. There are simply not enough music teachers to teach these electives that students are interested in pursuing. Lastly, I want to point out that the current enrollment numbers during our Intervention and Remediation, or INE, courses for music show that the interest exists for students to pursue extra music courses, but the current teaching staff cannot accommodate this interest. Our teachers love to teach these eager students. However, if the Board does not approve the hiring of new music teachers, we will not be able to offer these exciting new courses, nor will our students be able to access beginning-level ensembles beyond sixth grade, which means they miss out completely unless they take private lessons outside of school. We want to make space for these eager students to join our ensembles or learn about music in new and exciting ways. We aim to teach and inspire our students. Please help us help the students. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Members of the Board. Dr. Kizner, my name is Michelle Wickman, and I live at 305 Bentley Court in Stafford. I'm also a teacher at North Stafford High School. I'm talking tonight on a couple things, but first, the budget. Regarding the proposed budget, it's one of the best that I've seen in years. The title of Dr. Kizner's presentation says it all, Investing in Stafford's Future. Our county is growing. There are new housing developments. The express lanes extend here. There's construction all over. Stafford is evolving, but our school system is stagnant, some would say moving backwards. The tide started to turn last year, and a 5% increase for all staff was hugely appreciated. But many of our surrounding counties gave their employees a similar raise, so if we don't keep seeing increases, then we're still going to fall behind in comparison. The proposed budget also addresses condensing the teacher salary scale, which has been robbing Peter to pay Paul since the market comparison model was introduced. I'm all for a competitive market, but a comparison model should never be used to reduce the salary scale at any level. Also, consider that a teacher in Stafford must now work 39 years to reach the top of the pay scale, though the state of Virginia sets retirement at 30 years. The logic of all this continues to escape me, and it's time to fix it. Though employee salaries are important, they're not our biggest issue. It's 2020. Whether you agree with the specific details or not, mental health and equity for all shouldn't be another area where we're behind everyone else. And then there's our per pupil expenditure. Ranked 22 out of 133 in Virginia is not exactly billboard material. Please don't mistake my statements for aversion because I love Stafford. I love our schools. I love the people here. We do great things every day. My kids are having, for the most part, great experiences in their schools, but their class sizes are too large, their opportunities are not what they could be, and their teachers, bus drivers, administrators, insert any SCPS employee position here, are burning out. I realize it's not all under your control, and there's more advocacy to be done. These problems are fixable, and I believe they're all really being addressed in this budget. They're not fixable overnight, but we have to start somewhere. Last year's budget was a great first step, so let's take a second step this year and approve Dr. Kizner's budget. Let's invest in Stafford's future, and I guarantee you'll see great returns. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Christian Peabody. I'm the President of the Stafford Education Association. I live at 121 Fredericksburg, I'm sorry, Forest Avenue in Fredericksburg. Congratulations as well, Missy. You know, we all know that if it weren't for a lot of staff like you, the school simply wouldn't function. So, thank you for everything you do for us. Just really quickly, on behalf of Alan Watkins, my compensation architect, he can't be here tonight, he wanted me to provide you some documents as we talk about, like Michelle Wickman said, advancing this budget, this incredible budget that we have before us, and really, like the Chair said not too long ago, about really doing something that puts Stafford ahead, especially now that we've seen other divisions roll out their packages. So, this is simply some documentation for each of you, and Alan is going to send some talking points to the whole Board and Dr. Kizner as well, about how we can support, like Michelle said, the equitability of the condensation of the scale rollout. So, and like Michelle said too, we're ready to rock and roll on behalf of you and with you, and let's do something unprecedented again. Thank you so much.
My clock's already running. Okay. I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in the Rock Hill District, and I agree with the lady who came up here earlier about adding the additional world languages. I always thought that was a mistake when we dropped those. But let's be smart about which languages we choose. I think we should be offering things like Chinese, Arabic, Korean. Those kind of languages can help kids get jobs, especially in the area that we live in. Our northern counties, you know, like Fairfax and Prince William, they offer that kind of stuff. And I'm not sure that there's a real high demand in the job market right now for French and German speakers. So, it's just something we might want to think about when we add these. The second thing I wanted to mention was, I've been to your last two work sessions on the budget, and both times, you guys discussed stipends, and I just want to express my support for the JROTC stipends. I can only speak for Mountain View because that's where my child goes. I am on the Remind app that they send out to all the parents whenever there's like an event coming up, or the kids need to be picked up, or remind you about things. And I see a lot of the after-school activities that our two instructors at Mountain View do, and these are outside of the regular work hours. And I'm talking about things at night, things on the weekend, community service. I think recently, the last thing I got on my phone was the wreath pickup at Quantico. These things aren't being done during the school day. These are done on the weekends, and they're done in the evenings. My child is in Cyber Patriots. That's, you know, where they go do hackathon things, and they start in the afternoon, and those go well into the night. But just based on what I've seen on my phone, roughly adding it up, I would say that the two instructors at Mountain View put in probably an extra 16 weeks worth of outside activities. If you take all the hours they do, divide it by 40, it comes out to about 16 weeks. Again, I can't speak for the other schools because I don't get their notices, so I don't know what they do, but I certainly support giving them a stipend.
That is for speakers who want to speak to the budget. If you did not sign up, but you would like to come and bring your comments about the budget, please come forward and come on up to the microphone. Come on down. And when you finish, sign into your, well, my left, your.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Taylor, and I live at 1146 James Madison Circle. I'm here tonight to speak as a Stafford Schools graduate, once upon a time, an 18-year teacher with nine years in Stafford, a parent of two Stafford School students, and a resident/voter. I want to start by saying thank you for your public service. No one would take on this burden unless they cared deeply for students, so thank you. And thank you, Dr. Kizner, for staying. So, I'm here to express my opinion about the budget, which seems to be an increasingly more emotional and political topic every year. Regardless of whether you agree with my position, and I'm talking to the community here, regardless of whether you agree with my position, you wouldn't be here if you didn't share my concern, so I appreciate all the community members who showed up. Just to be clear, my position is that somehow, some way, it is vital that this Board approve Dr. Kizner's proposed budget, and advocate it, I advocate for it with the Board of Supervisors. Stafford Schools has transformed since I graduated from North Stafford in 95, not just in numbers, but in the needs of the students. One of the things I love most about teaching here in Stafford One of the things I love most about teaching here in Stafford is how, from Dr. Kizner down, Stafford administrators listen to and support the teachers when we bring innovative ideas to meet the diverse needs of our students in this moment. But all too often, the sticking point is funds. Well, funds and staff, because staff are doing more with less and there's only so far you can stretch us before we snap. I have three and a half preps this year, which was a relief because last year was four and a half. And I have a hundred and sixty students. They're all special to me and I work hard, often late into the night, on weekends and over holidays, et cetera, for each and every one of them. But a hundred and sixty is a lot. When you compound that with other duties, it's exhausting. And I'm not alone. The resounding chorus from wonderful veteran, award-winning, positive, tough, enthusiastic teachers, as well as from the bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, energetic, brilliant new teachers, is day after day, I'm exhausted and I don't know how I'm going to get it all done. And honestly, we don't get it all done, that is. Some things got to give. And where we choose to cut corners varies teacher to teacher. But I assure you, we are all cutting corners somewhere to fulfill the more with less implicit mandate. Those corners might be mandatory requirements or they might just be in our own standards that we set for ourselves. But because we have no choice but to triage our duties, corners are getting cut. So pleasing your position as the advocates for our schools approve and support this proposed budget in full. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there, is there anybody else who, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board with regard to the budget? Okay, seeing nobody leaping over their chair, we will move on to our general citizen comments. Again, the same things apply that Ms. Hollerback read, we're not going to read them again. I have, let's see, nine people signed up. Again, I will go through those, name those nine names. If you will stand off to the side, then just come up one after another. If you also would wish to speak, feel free to go ahead and get up and stand to the side and then you can follow those individuals. So I'm going to just read the names off in order and feel free to come on down. So first Andrea Cardea Carroll and Megan Tashenberger. Second, Joseph Oliveras. Third, Jeffrey Trigger. Four, Michelle Wickman. Five, Peter Baldwin and Isabel Nunez. Six, Adicha Biswas, I'm sorry if I mess these up. Seven, Yolsey Hernandez. Eight, Diego Pons. Nine, Jennifer Jeffers. So feel free to come up, you don't have to go in that order, but come on down and ladies, get us started.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. This is Megan Tashenberger and I'm Andrea Candia and we're both teachers at HH Pool. So our address is eight hundred Eustis for the purposes of this. We're here to share a proposal that we've created for next year's middle school schedule. We're looking at the current schedule and we're looking at the adaptations that are being made. And we realized that additional changes could be made to make improvements for our students and our schools. Students need the ability to explore many different courses. Through the schedules that Ms. Tashenberger and I have worked on, students are given enrichment classes such as creative writing or world music as proposed, but it also unlocks up to three blocks for elective or enrichment classes. And it keeps the students on the X-Y schedule that they're currently used to, so the transition would actually be quite easy and smooth for the students with very little change to their daily schedule.
There'd be many ways that this benefits both students and teachers. Some benefits for students would be students can experiment with elective courses without being locked into a certain track, such as in music classes. That was discussed earlier where you can really only join music classes in sixth grade without having to pay for extra lessons. It also allows for ability-based classes, beginning, intermediate, advanced, rather than specifically locked by grade level. Students have the ability to take more CTE and fine arts courses, which will boost their twenty-first century skills and is kind of moving students towards meeting the profile of a graduate that we're constantly looking at. The schedule will also benefit teachers. Core teachers will have planning time with both their grade-level cohorts as well as their professional learning communities by content area, allowing for collaboration and cohesion throughout the school. More core class, oh, sorry, core class sizes may decrease due to the addition of more sections for math and English. On top of that, the schedule builds in remediation periods during the day, as well as allowing flex time which can be used for clubs, character ed, or academic interventions as well.
So thank you for taking time to listen to us. We've submitted information about these schedules in lovely packets for you. If you would have a chance to look through that packet, we'd be very grateful. If you'd like to know more about it, our email addresses are on those packets as well. And we would be very excited to talk to you about the schedule that we've been working on. It brings us such joy and we know it would be great for our students. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. This is actually somewhat of an impromptu, sir, an impromptu visit here. I come, my name is Joseph Oliveras. I live at seventeen Courtney Court, Fredericksburg, Virginia, South Stafford. I come to you as a parent of a Colonial Forge student, my stepson Brandon. And he asked me a question about the sports program at the school. He said, "How do we change this?" And I'm like, "Well, holy smokes, first time I thought, I think, I don't know." And then I did the research and I, after the research, and my wife, that's also a teacher at the school, said, "The school board meeting is today," so I come here in front of you for that. Brandon said, "Hey Joe, I'd really like to play volleyball." And I don't know if this is a county thing or a state thing, but being that your representatives are kids in the state, I'm bringing it to you. My son wants to play volleyball and there is no volleyball programs in the county. And I believe that it's negating boys the opportunity to experience the sport. I'm sure there's some very talented kids that had the opportunity to play college volleyball, but they don't have the opportunity to play high school. So you're setting them behind. At the same time, I work for the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and I see all kinds of discrimination and how we make efforts to make, to give opportunities to people. And seeing this, I believe that this is somewhat discriminatory, not allowing the boys to have these opportunities while girls, luckily, they're allowed the opportunity. I want to wrestle and they can wrestle in the program with the boys. If they want to play football, if they're saying they want to play, they're allowed that opportunity. While I'm not, I'm not asking for you to let the boys play with the girls, I'm asking and requesting respectfully a program for our boys to be able to also play because they deserve those opportunities also. As such, that's all I have for you. I thank you so much for your time and if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, five eighteen Clint Lane in the George Washington District. This Thursday, my students are going to write their persuasive essay thesis on HB six nine four, which is a bill that just went through the House that says all middle school students at some point in time will take a, an elective for technology to get them more prepared. I'm all for that. Obviously, I can't tell my students that because they have to write the thesis, the pros and cons of why it's a good idea or a bad idea. I'm a big fan of technology. I love technology. I love my cellphone. But that being said, the cellphone in the classroom is starting to become a real problem. For the past two years, I've had to deal with phone calls from parents who are crying because they just can't deal with the bullying anymore. And one of the things that we have to come up with is a consistent policy because I feel like it's not only the parents who are upset, it's the students who are upset, it's the teachers who are upset, it's the administrators who are upset because the policy we have right now is not clear. It needs to be clear and it needs to be concise. I'm not saying suspend kids for having a cellphone in the classroom, but we need to have a consistent policy all throughout every school building that is best reflective for our kids to learn. When they're feeling threatened, when there's pictures that are out there, we need to be able to take some action on this. It's something that's starting to really, really hurt my soul. It's something that burdened me all weekend long, it's something that continues to burden me on a daily basis. So we need to take a step in the right direction in passing a cellphone policy that protects our students and ensures they're all learning. Thank you.
Hi, I'm back. Still Michelle Wickman, three oh five Bentley Court, Stafford. I just wanted to remind you guys about the townhomes of Hampton Oaks. Myself and several others from the neighborhood came and spoke back at a meeting in September. At that point in time, we were talking about the repercussions of the most recent elementary redistricting has caused some additional issues for us. The last time the middle schools were redistricted, the towns of Hampton Oaks were rezoned from HH Pool Middle, which is two point three miles away, to Stafford Middle, which is six miles away. This issue was further complicated by the recent elementary redistricting because it leaves the entirety of the Hampton Oaks subdivision going to the same elementary, middle, and high school, except the townhomes. So everybody goes to Hampton Oaks Elementary, HH Pool Middle School, North Stafford High School, but the townhomes get bussed over to Stafford Middle. So they're making all these friends with the elementary kids their whole elementary career and then they scoot over to Stafford Middle where they know nobody for three years. And then any friendships they maintain there get thrown away and they have to come back and go to North Stafford and hopefully they remember kids from elementary school. So I would hope, middle school registration is upon us really soon, so it's kind of crunch time. And I urge you to consider the detrimental impact of these combined redistricting decisions and return the towns of Hampton Oaks to HH Pool Middle School next year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isabel Nunez from Gale Middle School. I took the STEM pilot class and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Peter Baldwin and I'm also from Gale and I also took the STEM Innovation Class and I'm in eighth grade. We'd like to talk about our experience with the new electives, like the STEM program and stuff like that. I thought it was a great opportunity, first of all, because it opens up more, like, gives you more experience for jobs that you want to have in the future. Like, I took it because my parents were like, "If you want a STEM job, you have to get a STEM degree and that's easier to get whenever you have experience from the past." So I thought that was pretty good.
Whenever I saw the STEM class originally when I was signing up, I was very excited because I personally liked STEM and I thought that was cool because I've never seen it before. And it also gives me a lot of opportunities in high school for taking an elective. I have more experience now than I did if I hadn't taken the class before.
I thought that, I don't know, I guess that just giving us a new course and not just like the main courses that we have, but being able to branch out into either smaller sections and stuff like that was also good. That way, you're more focused on a certain path that you want to take for, in high school, like classes and stuff like that. And then it also, especially with the STEM program, it helps a lot with problem solving.
Well, speaking on the problem solving, we built not only a Land Rover, but we also worked on computers and coding and things like that. But taking the STEM class, we wanted to improve like step further in the things that we were doing. I feel like we were like kind of short on time in what we were doing because not, not all of us were really prepared. So taking it in seventh grade was probably better than us taking it in eighth grade. But it was still a great opportunity for what we were doing.
Yeah, and I guess that the whole, the whole class was great all in all. I just feel like we, maybe if the teachers had a little bit more like preparation time, that it would be a lot better. So, yeah.
Oh, yes. This was one of the things we built, it's our Land Rover that's, we had the problem solve a lot because it's originally not meant to be for land. It's meant for, to be in water. Yeah, the, it was the siege fridge design. That was what we worked on a lot. It's a lot of our problem solving aspect. We had to convert, like I said, from a water vehicle to a land vehicle. We got, we were partners in the project. We got pretty far in working with ours compared to a few other students, but it was a great opportunity to see how we could change the vehicle to make it our own design.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So hello, so I am here from Gale Middle School and I'm in eighth grade as well and I took the STEM Innovation elective this time. And so I really enjoyed the STEM Innovation elective and I think it really prepared me for high school. Because in high school, you have various elective options that you do not have in middle school. And if you don't know what any of them are when you go into high school, you can't really take them because you don't know what's in them. But having the opportunity to do the STEM Innovation elective in middle school will help me prepare, taking electives in high school. And I also enjoyed the coding aspect and the problem solving aspect, like my classmates. And yes, we created this Land Rover and so we had a lot of trouble with ours, but it was a lot of problem solving. And the wheels, we had particular, like, the wheels weren't, they didn't have enough friction to move. And then after tireless, like, troubleshooting, we actually managed to make it work and it was really exciting when it did work. And so that's about it. Thank you for listening. Yes. Oh, so this, we actually also had to fuse a circuit board, solder it. And using the circuit board, we created a remote and then using the remote, we can control the Land Rover. So it was new and we got to explore circuits, which is completely new and we have never done anything like this in any of the other electives. And I hope that we get to do more things like this in the future and that we can have more electives like these.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board tonight. My name is Jalissa Hernandez. I am an eighth grader at Tepan Gale Middle School and I took the digital art elective last semester. I believe that this class should be available to other students in Stafford County going forward because it offers exposure to a new media and computer, and computer programs. I believe this could be possibly the future of art. These programs open up opportunities to learn new skills in the art world. These skills can then be put to use in careers such as graphic design, marketing, architecture, and many more. With me today, I brought two of my favorite projects that I've made. This is an atmospheric perspective of a Chinese pagoda. The purpose, I created this using the Photoshop program. The purpose of that project was to learn how to convey depth in a, yeah. The second one is a, the actor that played Harry Potter. It is a monochromatic portrait, which offered many unique challenges in just working with one color. Beyond taking this art class, I've also designed a logo for an online community that has members all over the country, free of charge, free of charge, of course. But digital art was probably one of my favorite electives that I've ever taken and one of my favorite classes I've ever taken. I think that if other stu, if this could be offered again, I think that other students would probably enjoy, could hopefully enjoy the opportunity as much as I did. And, yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Diego Pons and I'm an eighth grader at Gale Middle School who took digital art last semester. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the school board tonight. What digital meant to me was overall an opportunity to learn how to use and create art on a computer. From learning how to use From learning how to use the tools in Photoshop to learning how to save documents, it was overall a learning experience. And I think these opportunities should be available to other students. This class can open up possible job opportunities and help students find what they're interested in. Personally, I have never used Photoshop until the digital art class, and I never thought it would be something I would be interested in. But the class showed me that digital art is great, and now it's my favorite elective I have ever taken. I think the reason I never tried digital art is because it was never an opportunity to me at home, and I think that's the case for most students. Computers cost a lot of money, which, which a lot of students can't afford, and you need to pay a monthly subscription to Photoshop. And that's why this class is an opportunity, because it isn't somewhat, something everyone can just do at home. Another example of how I use the skills I've learned in digital art is I make hand drawn cards and then print them and sell them at my parents' store. But I feel like I can improve my cards by making them on the computer, such as more color variation, more precise drawings, and I am able to change the scale of things. I plan on doing this over summer break, and I am also hoping to start a website for my cards, which I could use my digital art skills for. I already plan on using my skills in life, and I have many ambitions for the future. As you can see, I have one of my digital art projects with me here today, and this is a monochromatic self-portrait I made in Google Draw. Monochromatic means the image is only one color or different shades of one color. This taught me how to properly make shadows, how to recreate images in Google Draw, and it was just an opportunity to express myself in a new manner and media. In conclusion, digital art is an amazing opportunity for students to express their interests and feelings in a new form of media. I would like to see the school board invest more in creative classes such as digital art. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Jennifer Jeffers, she was up next. She had to leave, she was not able to go, but this is her artwork. Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate you.
So, anyone else wishing to address the board, come on forward. If you, if your name hasn't already been called, if you will sign in after you speak, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Bill Burnley. I live at 302 Tollbelt Court, and we basically came out here, I have my son here, who's in fifth grade. We live in the Hampton Oaks townhomes, and so, we wanted to bring attention to the thing that Ms. Wickman brought up a little bit earlier. And I have three sons. We moved to Stafford County partially because of the school system, so we would really like to, to see that happen. So, the, the change that she described earlier. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dan Tillman. I'm here, I live at 205 Sterling Court, the townhomes that currently go to Hampton Oaks. I'm kind of here to reiterate what Ms. Hickman and Mr. Burnley have stated so far. My students are, or my son is currently a student at Hampton Oaks, and he was affected by the redistricting last year where a lot of his friends went to Moncur. And he, he was bummed about that, but I think there's a lot of value in having those students stay with their class body through those shared experiences from elementary to middle school to high school, rather than transitioning. I feel like that's one more distractor from their studies. So, I just wanted to advocate my support for keeping those, that small population of students with the, with their friends and everybody else as they transition from school to school. Thank you.
Hi, Dana Brown again, 41 St. Williams Way, still. I'm back again. I just wanted to let you guys know, fun fact here, I have had kids in Stafford County schools every single year for the last 19 years. I have seen a lot. And one of the things I saw a couple of weeks ago was a woman speak here supporting removing cellphones from the classrooms. I wholeheartedly agree with her. I don't agree that you board members need to give up your phones. You're mature, you're respectful, you're not going to be sitting up there watching movies during the proceedings or having your headphones on, listening to your tunes. But the kids do do that in the classroom. I've heard that from my daughter, I've heard that from teachers, and they're coming out of school believing they can use their cellphones at any time, anywhere. Proving cellphones in the classes has had a lot of unintended consequences, and I really wish that you guys would roll that back to the parents that argue with you that they need it for safety. My alternative is from a teacher, is to hang up a clear plastic shoebag. They usually go over the door, but they can be hung anywhere. Cellphones go in when they come in, they go pick them up when they leave, and they're there in case of an emergency. And that way, kids will be paying attention in class. I did look real quick at our assessment scores for the last couple of years, and overall, our scores have been down, except for math, since we've had cellphones in class, so, just to let you know. And I also wanted to share my thoughts, my opinion, on the superintendent's resignation and rescinding thereof. I was skeptical. I felt Dr. Kizner giving a year's notice may sound generous superficially, but thought that ultimately it might hurt our replacement recruitment efforts, and it might be better for the schools if he stepped down sooner. After all, who quits in the middle of the school year? You know, in the middle of a budget cycle? That seemed odd to me. And then I wondered if it had anything to do with this, HB 153. That's the General Assembly's effort to repeal Virginia's right to work state and set up a collective bargaining units, and I thought maybe he's considering a state position. After all, he had just returned from a trip to Richmond just 24 hours prior to suddenly deciding that he needed to resign. The newspaper reported he'd made the decision on the drive back. But then I thought, no, if that was true, he wouldn't resign until the bill was passed because, you know, that could be awkward. So then I thought, I'm just really super cynical, and I need to get better about that, and I should just have a little faith and believe that Dr. Kizner is rescinding his resignations for all the right reasons, and because he really does love working in Stafford County schools, and not because HB 153 failed and will no longer be considered this year. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else wish to address the board?
Hello, George Schlegel, 35 Wincott Lane, Stafford, Virginia. I'm a bus driver in Stafford County. Okay, I just want to say, thank you. I was on special needs route yesterday, and I had a student tell me, said, "I really like Dr. Kizner because he's here for us. He's not here for anything for himself." This was a special needs student. He said that he had seen me speak at the school board, so the students are watching. And the students absolutely love this man. I don't have a whole lot more to say about this, but I just want to get that out here and clear, it is not just the SCA that loves him. It is the students of Stafford County that loves him. We have a superintendent who will go into the schools and actually see the students. We've had superintendents before that would run at the side of students, that cannot talk to a bus driver without breaking out in hives. So I think we need to do everything that we possibly can to keep Dr. Kizner for his full term and possibly beyond. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
See, and I didn't even have to remind you, Mr. Schlegel, to sign in. You've got this down now.
Yeah. I'll have her play all speaking.
All right. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Okay, I see everybody in their seats. All right, so then we will close public comment, and then we're going to move on to board committee reports. We will start with the Finance and Budget Committee Report. Ms. Young, will you be delivering that?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and so, the padmet, and we received an update yesterday on repairs that were completed to Malchers, and we were, we also knew the ones that were left over. So, we're happy to note that they did some painting, they repaired some walkways, there was a new gym HVAC that was completed there, and then they had some classroom improvements also. I believe they also had a gym floor, so that was great. So, so we know that things are being done there, so I'm happy for that. We also discussed the cash collections for the school site, so, right now, a lot of parents are paying with cash, especially when they're going to games, and I think we could be a little bit more efficient and make sure that the money passes through all the way where it's supposed to get to. And for that, we were planning on looking at credit cards and making sure that the, the fees does not hit the parent. So, hopefully, if the finance department gets a new position or opening there, this person could take this on, because like right now, they're like working on adrenaline. Other topics that were discussed, of course, we had a work session where we talked about teacher skill, service skill, enhancements, and stipends. So, another thing that the communications department wanted to come back with is one of the board members had asked about Peachjar. I don't know what Peachjar is, but basically, they will come back with some more information. We got one email, so we thought we would look into that and get some more information on the inner workings of Peachjar. Other than that, I do not have anything else. Do we have board member comments?
They're coming.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Any other announcements, committee? Ms. Haller, back to you, for governor, okay? All right. I'm going to take just a chairman's privilege again. I know that we had brought up at our first meeting, just for us to consider whether we thought additional meetings in a smaller fashion between board members and the Board of Supervisors is something we wanted to pursue. I know at the time, there was not, I wasn't sure what the temperature was, so I just wanted to ask the board again, is that something we would be interested in at least, saying we would be interested in doing or not? I just, would like to just reopen it for.
So, I just had a question, which is, are we currently having the two-on-two?
Ms. Bomke and I are supposed to get together ourselves just to try and see if we can work out a timing that works because there's so much, at one point, so much transition. But, it seems like though, well, without giving my, I think people know why I'm bringing this up, because I think that there is some value, but like I said, we have to have board support, so I'm just re-bringing it up for, for discussion, because it had been raised with me by some Board of Supervisors, but.
I can tell you that my board member fully supports it, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to get down to support her during the last Board of Supervisors meeting.
I did on your behalf.
Thank you. But, I mean, I think it's had some value in the past. It got us to the, the joint CIP process with the Board of Supervisors. It was working well up until a certain point, but I won't, I won't bring that back up again. But, from what it sounds like, it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of support on the other side for it. I'm, I'm for it, but I can't say that the other side is open to it.
I just want to say, the thing that's important to me is that we are having some conversations, and that's why I asked about the two-on-two. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't, I don't really care which form it goes in, I just want communication between the two boards in some form.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
Chairman, I would, I would encourage it. I think one difference between the, what we used to call the three-on-three and the two-on-two is that the three-on-three is open to the public. It's advertised, anybody from the public is, is welcome to come, and any, any topic can be discussed. So, I, I think if, you know, if the supervisors are, are interested, I would certainly encourage this board to, to move forward, because as Dr. Chase says, any communication is going to, you know, well, I'm paraphrasing, but to be supportive and beneficial.
Madam Chair, I would say that I'm definitely supportive of this joint conversation, and my supervisor has reached out to me as well to see where I stand on it, and so we are communicating with each other about that as an interest.
I agree. I think that it's important that we have some sort of regular format for meeting with our Board of Supervisors so that we're communicating. I think it's, they control the purse strings. We have to have open communication. I know that, that there's been some reticence, but I think if we make an effort, I think we can come to some agreement about either a two-on-two or a three-on-three, something that, that works effectively so that we can bypass some of these miscommunications and problems.
Yeah, I, I was there, and I was invited by one of the, the Board of Supervisors, but I spoke to three of them, and they were all interested in having this. One of the issues that was spoken about was actually having guardrails and knowing what they were planning on discussing, and making sure that the staff on both sides know what it is that they need to go back and, and, and review or do analysis on, so that when they get back to the table, they know where they stand. It looks like it was always a moving kind of target on what it is that we were being discussed. So, as long as everybody's on the same page, I also agree. That is very important. I have quarterly, actually not quarterly, monthly coffee with several of the Board of Supervisors. So, yeah, it's good to have discussions way before the budget, so.
And I, I just wanted to, to agree with, with Ms. Young. My concern is, you know, if we're going to do this, that we do have a clear charter and bylaws about how it's going to operate, because it's pretty awful to be asking staff to come up with some kind of data 24 hours before a meeting or the morning of a meeting, and that was happening, and it was a problem, so. I think the nice thing about as we go forward as a board, we learn, we learn from the past, and if we do put the guardrails, I know that actually, I believe that the school board had actually more of a charter than the Board of Supervisors. So, if there is some interest, I would be willing to draft something up that I would ask that maybe we all sign, saying that we have some interest in that and put some things forward. I can either bring it to the next meeting, or we can circulate it through our clerk. I believe that any way that we start talking, even if it's generally, and I would agree that, I would hope that this committee is not as much about delving into data so we can argue over it, that it's more about bringing forward topics that we see coming forward and just having those kinds of discussions. Without burdening staff, I would hope that we would mostly share documents that we have within our possession that have been created for the board for our purposes, plus the Board of Supervisors also gets additional documents that they may be willing to share with us, but I do not, I would hope that we would not envision this as a committee to make more work. It would be more discussing topics that our boards are discussing, I don't want to say in our silos, but we could look at it that way, and this is a way to sort of begin to cross that over. So, with some of those guardrails, on, on, on a letter, I will circulate something. We can decide how to go forward, but those would be some things. If you have additional thoughts or don't capture it, you know, we will, we can talk about it with, with Missy and how we craft that, but as you know, this is something I feel pretty strongly about since we started. So, thank you for indulging on that. I think there's something great for the board to, to move forward with and at least open that door. Next, we are on to board member comments, and who wants to get us started? I'll take volunteers tonight. Sure, thank you. Love volunteer.
Yep, I've got plenty. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I want to thank Rebecca Musso, the Drew Middle School Gifted Resource Teacher, for her invitation to the Drew Middle School Science Fair, which I attended with Ms. Randall. The students were exploring all kinds of interesting questions, ranging from, is there an effect of gender on color preference, to whether latex or silicon swim caps produce more drag, to what's the best construction for surviving an earthquake? So, I had an absolutely wonderful time. I also went to the ribbon cutting for the new swing set at Grafton Elementary School. Several fourth graders had expressed their desire for a swing set on the playground to Dr. Kizner about a year ago. They did a research project on it, and Dr. Kizner was so impressed that he had Greg Martin work with them to figure out if it was feasible, and the PTA at Grafton came up with the funds, and there's now a swing set at Grafton. I went to Conway Elementary to observe the after-school dual-language immersion pilot program. Very impressive. Students were learning about simple machines in Spanish. The majority of the class was conducted in Spanish. I have never studied Spanish, but I learned a number of Spanish words during the 30 minutes I was there, so I'm very excited about this and hope. So I'm very excited about this, and hope we can develop it further and provide this opportunity to, to all our elementary school students. This morning, I visited Mountain View to see the International Backlaurier Program. I had the opportunity to sit down and speak with students enrolled in the program. They were wonderful ambassadors. I asked them a question that probably Dr. Kizner would ask them too. What would make the program better if resources were not an issue? And some of the ideas I heard were more IB elective offerings, extending the IB program down to the middle school levels, so that students would be more prepared when they got to high school, international study opportunities, guest speakers and field trips. So lots of great ideas. Then on January 16th, I attended the CGS governing board meeting. We elected officers. Mr. John Copeland from Caroline County graciously agreed to continue as chair. I am continuing as vice chair. The board approved the change to the diploma seal requirements that I brought to this board several months ago, so it's now official. CGS applications for Stafford were due on January 10th. There were 190 applicants for the 90 available seats. The director reported on some of the state budget proposals. She also noted that the state is now going to require governor's school programs whose student demographics differ greatly from the overall school division, to provide a plan for fixing that disparity. So that's now coming down from the top, not just coming from us, and it's something our board has been looking at. On April 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:30, seniors will be presenting their culminating projects at the UMW Stafford campus, and you are all invited. Then on February 3rd, I attended the Technology Advisory Committee meeting at Mountain View. While I was there, the outdoor lights were being replaced as part of the energy efficiency contract that we adopted a while back, so train is busy, it's nice to see that happening. We learned that the county has received an $875,000 grant to help fund extending Wi-Fi to the eastern edge of the county, so that may improve things for our students. There's also interest in where High School Number Six will get located, because we will run a fiber optics cable to that school, and that will potentially provide better service to that area of the county if they don't currently have it. We got a demonstration of digital hall pass, which is being piloted at Mountain View. It was very interesting. And on March 9th, at 6:30, Mountain View will be having a program titled, Know What Your Kids Know About Cell Phones, A Presentation for Adults. So I know that's been an ongoing thing, but very excited to see that. And then finally, on February 4th, I attended Dr. Kizner's District Leadership Team meeting, along with fellow board members, Dr. Warner, Ms. Young and Ms. Randall. Marcus Newcomb was there. He spoke about his work in Chesterfield and Petersburg as superintendent. It was very interesting. And to my other board members, if you have never managed to go to one of the DLT meetings, I encourage you to check it out, because it is really very, very cool to see everybody so excited about things. And that's it.
All right. Dr. Warner, you want to go next?
I'll go quick. I lost my notes. I think they're home buried in a pile of papers. First of all, I attended the, at North Stafford High School Challenge Day, which I had no idea what to expect going into that, and that was quite an experience, but I think it was such a valuable experience for all these kids to be able to talk about very painful and difficult topics in a way that helped them kind of bridge a real gap, and I really thought it was a worthwhile program. I did really enjoy the district leadership conference that I attended with Mr. Newsom and Dr. Kizner set up. I find that this kind of leadership development in the school district is very beneficial, and I was really impressed with the way the staff responded, and I liked that it was centered around a book about equity in education. And Ms. Cale was kind enough to give it to me, so I'll be reading that, and I will be happy to share some information. And I've got other, I will be meeting with Wide Water Elementary. They have Girl Smarts. I'm interested to find out what that's all about, and I will be attending at Moncur. I'll be going to their after-school dual-language program to check that out.
Outstanding. Thank you. Ms. Young, you want to go next?
Sure. I will follow up on the dual program. There's plans of, so I'm very excited about that. And yes, I, I wish that we had many, many more languages, because definitely, it does make you multitask and, and think on different things, and yes, it just makes you like superwoman, I guess. But, but yeah. It's amazing when people mention that. It always brings a smile to my face, when somebody thinks it's really cool to speak several languages. It is really cool, because sometimes you're on a train, or, you know, you're, you're somewhere, and nobody sees you as speaking six languages, and you understand everything that they're saying, but when you get off the train, and you look back, and you smile at that person, and then they know that you knew everything that it was saying. So it's, it's kind of fun, just, just being able to do that. So, one of the plans that we want to also do with this dual program is, is bring about the foods and the ethnicity and the culture to the schools to share with the rest of the students and staff, because this is how change begin, being comfortable with change. It's, it's not, you know, at some point in time, you feel like it's a scary situation in the beginning, but we're all in this together. And the development program, this leadership program that the, the leadership is in with Dr. Kizner, I feel it's, is such a value-driven, that the result is gonna be best for the community as a whole, and for the parents and the students. It's just not for one school or the other. Hopefully, this is across the board, because what we don't want to see is just that we're doing for one or for some, but for all. And I think that, from the student perspective, they don't see a change, they just see that we're all in this together, we all get along. So I commend Dr. Kizner for, you know, listening, because he, he does talk a lot too, but he listens a lot too, so I love him for that. Because he's about, he's about change, and he's about making sure that things happen. He's not scared to make a change, and if he's wrong, you know, he'll pull back and say, hey, you know, I, I believe that we could do this better. So this, this Mr. Newsom, it was fun being with my fellow board members. I enjoyed it very much, and, and yes, it's something, I think I went to three so far, but I can't miss any, but you know, if the, my job is looking, I'm always sick on that day in the morning. Other than that, I did visit Rodney Thompson, because we, I do have a lot of students there. I mean, I do, I don't favor one middle school over the other, but it's HH pool, you know, my kids went through HH pool, so I just say, well, let me see the sister school, Rodney Thompson, or brother school, because it's like, I don't know if you all recall, I've been here in, in Stafford County a long time. And so there were two twin brothers that had, that were principals, one was principal, I know Pam remembers that, one was a principal in each school, so it was kind of fun having twin schools. So I visit with him, and funny enough, Dr. Kizner visited the same day, right? So poor Mr. Archibald, he probably thought, got a little bit nervous. I said, like, look, I'm, I'm just here to hang out with you. So it was exciting seeing the students and the math classes. I wanted to see if the math classes were oversized, and there were too many kids in there. One thing that I do notice is that clearly, more students in regular math, we need to try to see if they could get to the higher level math, because if we do not expect more from these kids, they're not gonna give us more. We just need to push them, and yeah, if they can't handle it, then yes, definitely, they could step back down, but we do need to try to get them there. And that's all I have. In terms of, you know, I think I heard, you know, comments here and there about, you know, Dr. Kizner and why he's back, well, guess what? I'm very happy that he's decided to, to stay with us. I think it's very, very important that we show that we have good leadership, and that we respect the leadership that we currently have. I feel that he has done a lot for our schools, and in terms of change, and I feel that it's no sense of us keep moving and changing and shaking things up. And I know that new school board members come in, and you know, things might change, but I, I think that we need to look at what's best and, and why we're here. And if we concentrate on the goal at hand, which is the student itself, then I believe that we all would be on the same page if we think about the student, because if the student is happy, the parents are happy. Am I making you cry? If the students are happy, the parents are happy, and if the parents are happy, we have a happy community. But we need to make sure that it's about all the students, because if what's best for them is what's best for our community, we're gonna keep our students here when they grow up, they want to teach in our schools, and we will have a very healthy community. Thank you.
Ms. Healy, do you want to, can you go first?
Start us off? Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Warner to let me go, and you, let me know when she goes to Moncur, because I have an interest in the dual-language program as well, and it's right across the street from my office. I could, I could get there closely. I want to thank all the, the members of the public and the staff who have sent us input on the budget. This is the crunch time on the budget, I know. We start, what, right, July 2nd, on the, on the, on the next year's budget, you know, even before we closed out the year before. But this is really the critical time, because the school board is going to approve a budget. Now, the budget we approve is not the ultimate budget, because we won't know that until we know what funding is available from the state, as well as the locality. But the budget that we approve is the school board's budget, and it's what the school board views as meeting the needs of the school system. So I think it's, this is an opportunity. I appreciate all the people that, that spoke tonight, but as well as the ones that have, have communicated directly with the school board members, and I'm sure Dr. Kizner's been having lots of contact with the, with the staff and his, his parent advisory committee as well. So thank you, there's still time. We have another budget work session at our next meeting, two weeks from tonight, and then I think we're gonna be ready to, to get, get down and approve, approve the budget that we are gonna send to the board of supervisors, which we will be advocating for the needs of the school system. And then when we get to that point, that's when we will need, you know, our community support as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Thank you. I would also like to say that I, being at the DLT meeting was really kind of a fun thing for me, because it was my first time coming, and I wasn't even familiar with the book that they were reading. Thank you, Pam, for allowing for us, for us both to have a copy of it, so we can play catch-up, because I know there is one more, as I believe, in March. And it was really kind of fun for me in that regard, because I got to sit down with the staff leadership, and it wasn't teachers and principals table, it was a different table, and, but still, the conversations and the experiences were just really fun and, and interactive, and it was just something that I, I really appreciated sitting in, and was excited when I left. But I honestly have to say that everything I've done has been really fun. Visiting the schools, I've had a chance to visit Moncur, and Falmouth, and Grafton, and Ferry Farm. And I even got to see, of course, all my kids went through Ferry Farm, but to see it demoed out, I got to put a hard hat on and go in and see, like, the guts, and that was really fun for me. I got to attend the science fair at Drew, and it was the first time they brought it back after a long time of not having it, and it used to be something, I ran at Ferry Farm, and of course, I was a science teacher as well. So it was fun to see the projects, but the kids being able to look at you right in the face, and just make the eye contact, and be the teacher of the information that they had researched and were showing us, was really kind of fun to watch and participate in. I also got to walk around Drew, I mean Dixon Smith, for their community showcase of Learning Night. It was really rainy night, but still to walk around in that school to see, it was completely student-led. Whether you went to see a science, science fair project, or a history project, or music in all different areas of the building, the Reader's Theater, they would just, you know, put on a police hat, even though they were supposed to be playing a princess, they didn't care. They were just doing what it is that they wanted to share and show, which happened to be Shakespeare that night. So these are really kind of fun things that I get to kind of go back, because I only have one high schooler left, and you kind of get to miss all those other things. So that's been really fun. Last week was counselor appreciation week, and I just want to make sure that I personally say thank you to my kids' counselors. One piece of advice that has been huge and helpful in guiding me, as well as my kids, is we had a, for my first one, now who's graduating from college this year, he told us, he said, all throughout your high school experience, visit any college of any kind, whether it be their football field, their bookstore, their common area, do a, do a class, do anything, but visit and see where your kids would like to go, and what they like about that school. And I remember, we were in Oregon, and so, visit University of Oregon. And we got to, you know, of course, see the football team, because that's my son's obsession, but it was really interesting. When we went there, my son was like, oh, I want to go to Oregon. I was like, no, I think we can find something like this in Virginia. But still, it was the experience that was gifted to us by a counselor, and it was just, we just happened to do it. And so I would just say, there's nuggets in your counselor's advice to your students, as well to, as the parents, that are really, you know, something that we have to, when we have these appreciation weeks, that we get to think back to those little nuggets that we got, that have helped us as parents or our children. I would also like to thank you for the blanket and the note cards. Those are so very nice and thoughtful. I really appreciate those. And I, I also want to say that what's been really fun for me is conversations. I have enjoyed speaking now. I finally got to sit down with Pam. We had a three-hour breakfast this weekend, and just getting to know so many of the different, you know, you, I've been in the audience for so long, but to come up here and like individually talk and get to know, you know, what their opinions are, as well as just their, just about them, their life, their kids, it's been really fun. But I have to say, what I just had no idea about was, first of all, I even asked Dr. Kizner, I was like, when do you sleep? But even more so, which the answer was seldom, but even more so, I have to ask the same question of his staff, because, oh my gosh, they, like, when Liza and I had a meeting to talk about the middle schools this week, they, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm gonna ask a question that they're just gonna have to go, we'll get back to you, Susan. Not at all. They have looked at, they look at so many things from so many different angles, and when you think you have a question, they're gonna show you something that will shock you, that will say, you know, it's funny you should ask that, I worked it up this way too. But it's an incredibly hardworking staff, hardworking staff, that works for Dr. Kizner, and I just appreciate the work that they put in. So, thank you.
All of you who are here tonight with us.
I know. Still.
Ms. Haller, that's good.
Well, on that note, I want to say thank you to the staff that came early morning Saturday to sit in one more work session. You guys must cringe every time, we're like, yeah, let's, let's plan a work session. No, not a work session. But seriously, I think you should mandate that there's no dress attire on work session days, mornings especially.
Can we do pajamas?
Sweatpants.
Pajama pants.
Yoga pants. Not some of the men, that's probably not cool, but you know what I mean. Anyway, I was really glad to see the fire recruit class. It just reminded me that Stafford County has some pretty cool, we, we have some pretty cool relationships with the county. There are, there are two things that kind of popped into my head after that, and I like to pitch this for the sheriff's office, every now and then, in case people are new to the county, and they don't know about what some of the classes are that the sheriff's office is involved in. The RAD class, which is the rape, rape, aggression defense class, I took that myself, and it was, it was interesting. I did it with, with another friend, and, you know, probably the only place I can get away with hitting the sheriff in the head with my fist. So it was, it was, it was really cool. Knocked, knocked his headgear right off of his head. That was Sheriff Jett, by the way.
Yes.
That was a long time, a long time ago.
And they've lately retired.
Yeah. And then the other one that they do is kind of cool as well. It's called the Citizens Police Academy, and it's a, I forget how many weeks it is, I'm gonna say it's six weeks. And you get to, you know, get to ride in cruiser, you get to go to shoot guns, and you get to do all kinds of things, and you get to... get to do all kinds of things and you get to see how our deputies, what our deputies are doing out in the fields in our county. So, you can go to StaffordSheriff.net and sign up if you've never been, I highly recommend you do it. Mothers and daughters, great class for you to take together. So, thank you.
All right. I will round us out. First and foremost, I know we've done a lot of thank yous and one of the things I want to do tonight is also, is this is this School Board Appreciation Month and it was announced by the governor and stuff. And I want to say to the school board members who sit here, to those who have sat in our seats for years before, we can only build on what came before us. But I always know that, as actually one of the members of the public said, the people who sit here really care about this place, this school district and the people in it. And we always want to be moving forward and we want to be building on what has come before. And so, I do want to thank all of you all, not just as being one of your colleagues but also as a parent. Because I know the hours that you put in, but it's not just that, it's that you put yourself out there to go out and argue for education. Because I can tell you, having sat here six years, it can be a lonely fight. And I am excited that I think that there is a new engagement to make that case that has been being made for a long time. And I think that we do more when we work together. And there's a lot of great stuff about our division that I hope we never lose sight of the great things going on in the quest to make it better. And so, I look forward to that challenge and to having a larger team as we urge a new emphasis potentially on education in Stafford County. In that vein, I would like to just make a couple comments in terms of, I want to thank the board members and our Board of Supervisors for our annual, March 23rd, Dr. Kizner, now you have to be there, so put it on your calendar. If you go down, we will be serving this year at Head Start, but we are not going to be at Melcher's this year, we're going to be at our new North Star location. A great shout-out to our wonderful caterer who has been there in the past. I get to find out from my board members who is a good ice cream scooper because that is a primo part of the evening. Yes, and remember, bring your own if you have your favorite. So, it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to get out, not just in our community but to also share our love and the importance of early education with our funding body because that is such an important part. Going to Girl Smarts, you're going to love it, I'm a huge fan. Mrs. Flut, I don't know if she'll be your coordinator or not, but what a great program for our young women. I can't tell you more about that. With regard to, and I didn't do this, I apologize during the board member, during the board committee comments, one of the things that came up in the legislative committee, I usually am part of the phone call when we coordinate with the Board of Supervisors. So, those are very much focused on their priorities, so not just the general.
It was canceled.
It was canceled on Friday. But the one that we had before was, one thing to remember is, one of their big initiatives was the day-school initiative. And I know we have some other comments about that with regard to the budget, but it looks like those bills may or may not get through. This will be like the fourth year we've been trying. However, there is a big study going on that they are sort of waiting for the conclusion of. I know that the county is very involved in that. I just hope we kind of insert ourselves as much as we can because that J-Lark study is going to be very important to that legislation going forward, which is something unique we offer here. And I hope that we continue to do that. Please stay tuned for other bonding activities sort of with the board and working together. There have been some dates offered by the Virginia School Board Association, which I received today about some opportunities. So, stay tuned, I'm going to have Missy do that, but I didn't want to do it on her clerk day. But she'll probably have to do it on Clerk Appreciation Week to help coordinate for us. And again, I would like to thank Missy and Angie for all their hours. You don't know the kind of work that we must be. So, anyway, I thank you again, Missy, and I will now turn over to Dr. Kizner.
Thank you. So, I just want to follow up a little bit. Holly kind of said some of the words I was going to say because I have a proclamation for Virginia School Board Appreciation Month. And I know you're saying, "He doesn't really have to read the whole thing because we know he already appreciates us that much." So, I'm going to read like one or two paragraphs and then I'll make sure tomorrow you get it all, okay? You okay with that? Because there's a lot of whereas here, okay? But I'll just read a couple. Whereas, and I do want to say this because you guys, I know what you guys are doing. All the things that you guys mentioned, you didn't say everything. You guys are putting so many hours in and our staff are recognizing it and parents are recognizing it and I greatly appreciate it. All right, whereas the education, oh, they wrote me notes, speak loud into the mic. Okay. Whereas the education of Virginia school age children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built. And whereas locally-elected and appointed school boards play an important and vital role in a representative democracy and decisions made by local school boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia public schools. And whereas, this year's theme, excellence through education, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. As whereas, School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relations between thousands of Virginians who champion the mission of public education and school board now members. Therefore be it, proclaim that Stafford County Public Schools recognizes the contributions of their school board to the academic success of all students and expresses their sincerest recognition to board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the county. And it finally proclaimed that the superintendent of schools declares February 2020 a School Board Appreciation Month and encourages school board and community leaders to appropriately recognize our dedicated school board members. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And they're going to clap. Thank you. All right. Just some other real quick things. I do want to recognize the students that came up. I think the students were advocating a position they were sharing. I think as, sometimes as adults, we could learn on how you, the etiquette and professionalism of expressing a point of view. And I do want to recognize them. And I really do think one thing we did tonight, we highlighted, I mean, that was, I didn't know that was happening, but the firefighters and then those kids showing their projects are displayed. If people who are watching or maybe if they watch it later are going to see their investment in our education system. So, I do thank those children and I do thank the staff too. I also want to thank, besides the staff, I want to thank all the staff. We got a letter, I received a letter January 31st from United Way, recognizing Sharice Taylor who's here today and Emily Byers, who many of you know, for co-leading our effort to raise funds for the United Way and Stafford County Schools, raised over $40,000 to contribute to the United Way. So, I applaud them. I will say, I've already been working with Lionel White on the Hampton Oak Townhome issue and we will be addressing it very quickly with the parents, I'm meeting with the principals. You understand, I have a 5% rule. So, it's the number of families that we're looking at fall under that 5% rule. And it makes sense on multiple levels and Barry Sodile, Director of Transportation, is very supportive because he sees an opportunity to improve the routes. I do want to mention, I know some of you were there, I did attend part of the Fine Arts Advisory Committee and I attended part of the Special Ed Advisory Committee. So, not only do we have you guys and staff, we have a lot of parents and other stakeholders that are invested to making sure our school system is the best it could possibly be. So, I thank that and I'm just going to stop there, thank you. Okay.
All right, then we are moving on. Is there a motion to approve our consent items?
Motion to approve consent.
Is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, the approval of consent items 1101, 2, 3, 4, and 5. All right, moving on to action items for 12.01. Is there a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution requesting the transfer of $14,700,000 from the Health Benefits Fund to the OPEB, I'm just going to say that, trust fund. Any discussion or questions?
Chairman, I'm going to support this motion and I understand that if we needed to access these funds at any time to pay for retiree health benefits, we could do so.
That's correct.
So, I appreciate that being clear. And I am very pleased to hear that we are not having these excessive amounts in overage. You know, last, maybe we cut it a little close last year, but I think the better estimating and thanks to the review our staff is doing on that, that we're not going to be in this position, you know, in the future.
All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action item 12.02, approval of proposed policy revision to, I'm sorry, proposed revision to policy 1108.
Motion to approve?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I will start with if you all need comments?
Go ahead.
If any.
I don't have a comment.
I was pointing to Dr. Chase.
Yeah, so I did add one item to the materials on this agenda and this was simply some language from the Library of Virginia, from its statement on the use of text messaging and private email. And I just wanted to read this last sentence, which is, "The Library of Virginia strongly encourages all public officials to use official government email accounts for public business and refrain from conducting government business by text messaging." So, I just thought that was in the interest of people who were interested in the policy. And then I wanted to share that I had heard from a couple of my constituents after the last meeting. One of my constituents alleged that some former and current board members have posted to various social media sites like Facebook during our meetings. I don't know if this is true, this is just, has been alleged to me. But if it is true, I hope those board members will stop doing this. I don't think it's appropriate for teachers or principals to be posting to social media sites during their workday and therefore, I don't think board members should be doing so during our meetings, which is kind of our working hours. And then another constituent noted that if board members don't feel comfortable being out of contact with their children while they're here at work, they should consider hiring a babysitter or a caretaker. So, I just wanted to share those two comments that I had received.
Am I next?
Go ahead.
So, when, the reason why I'm for this, simply because I was on the Technology Advisory Committee for many, many years. And it was then that we made a decision that we were going to try to influence to get laptops and computers and technology in the school because we thought it was a good idea for the students to have access. And then we also thought about those kids that didn't have computers and figured out a way to either have, you know, laptops on cart and working with, you know, I was also on the, I think, I forgot what the board is, that was assigned by the Board of Supervisors, where I worked with other folks to try to get Wi-Fi to areas such as Hartwood. But going back to the reason, I know, right? I'm not on that committee anymore, I'm here. So, one of the things that I didn't see coming back then was that the cell phone would be so influential that the kids are actually attached to it in their mind, which is really not good. And I'm in technology. At the same time, I don't accept that my kids at dinner or, you know, in public have their phones while people are talking to them. I don't expect them to have these in school either. Yes, when we put, you know, something out that we have to put the phones in, that could be an issue there because some people might walk away with a phone that doesn't belong to them. So, we just need to plan that a little bit better. But I think there is a way that, you know, parents could still feel safe that for that one time that they need to reach their child for whatever reason that they can. That seems to be, that influencing part of parents are feeling that they need to be able to reach their kid. But, and I share that, but at the same time, I think that we are making a grave mistake going down this path and allowing these kids, and like I said, I walked in some of the schools, and the phone is like a, you know, in the back pocket of the young ladies and it's right there. So, we need to have a rule standard across the board that all principals and all teachers could abide by because we have too many fluctuating rules. One is hard on the students and another one, just let it go by. So, if we could have a standardized policy and a time when they could have their phones be even as a reward, that they go out five minutes, you know, lunch or whatever and be able to have their phones, but not in the classroom when it's not during that study time. Thanks.
I just, I think one thing we keep forgetting is that it's not a phone. It's a computer. It's Instagram, it's camera, it's a video camera, it's social media, it's not a phone. It's Google, it's all sorts of, it gives them Snapchat, it gives them access to so many different things and it's distracting. And we all, you know, I catch myself checking my phone. It's email, it's Twitter, it's messaging, it's not a phone. If it was just a phone, we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation. But the fact is that it's more than a phone and that's why we have to probably develop rules that prevent it from being a distraction, no matter what we're doing, whether it's the students, the teachers, or us.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Healy, you want to start us?
Okay, those who know me know I'm technologically challenged. For me, it is a phone, primarily. It is a phone. I understand the impetus for this policy, but I am not going to support it. I respect everyone on this board and I think everyone on this board is mature and they can exercise reason on whether they need to look at the phone. I probably have looked at my phone less during these meetings than, well, other than, maybe even the two of you, the new people, because I just, I don't do it. But I'm not willing to take it away because I think there could be an emergency and children, family, whatever. You know, if something came up, how is the universe that you are connected to that may need you? And it certainly is a long shot, it's maybe like winning the lottery. But if they did, how would they ever know this emergency number? And I'm just curious where this emergency number would ring because I'm assuming nobody up here is going to have a phone, so somebody somewhere is going to have a phone, you know, to get these emergency calls. So, I would respectfully say that we can police ourselves. And I can't say, I have seen cases where it has been distracting, where, you know, it's texting or whatever. I haven't posted anything on social media, wouldn't even know how without my daughter, you know, coming to help with it. But I just, I think we're adults and I don't think this is necessary at this point. I think you made the point in bringing this forward and I don't see, I don't see phones, you know, I don't see people using them, so that's good. I mean, if that's, if that's the point.
It's killing me.
Well, I don't know about Dr. Kizner, I can't see him over there. And I know Dr. Chase doesn't use hers.
It's killing me.
But I'm just, I'm not going to support this. And another thing, I pointed this out before, if I were going to support it, I would want it across the board. I wouldn't just say regular meetings. I said before, we have a lot of work sessions, we have a lot of special meetings, so what's the difference? You know, if we're going to exercise judgment and restraint, it should be whenever we are meeting, whether it's a formal meeting like this or an informal meeting if we're, you know, in the schools or somewhere else. Now, I understand some of these comments have to do with phones in the classroom or in the schools, but that's not what this is about. This is about regular meetings of the school board. So, while I have no intention of... So while I have no intention of using a phone or certainly not, you know, engaging in, in social media during, during a board meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm just not going to support this. But I, I, I want to say I understand why it came forward, and I think the point has been made. And you can see that from the last, the last meetings, as well as the work session. And it didn't even apply there. Thank you.
All right, any other com, other comments? All right, then I'll, I, I too appreciate that it was brought forward. I think hearing the public comments tonight, not just tonight, but in other forums, but also in the, in public comments the last several meetings, is that there is a concern about cellphone use in general. I think that's something we as a division and as this board need to, to tackle. I know, I do believe that we need to have a broader discussion March 9th, correct, Dr. Chase? I got my ID on it, but then I didn't bring my thing. The more we can learn about cellphone use, the better. So tonight, I will not be supporting this, however, I understand the impetus behind it. I think that there has been a point been made. This does not mean it does not need to be, or if need be, be revisited as we go through board training, which I hope we will all be committed to soon. We can talk about these and other issues, but I think it's something we're bringing forward. I think it's also a conversation going on elsewhere. That is something that I think this board needs to come up with how we want to move forward with that in cooperation, certainly with Dr. Kizner, but also with our community. I think that it, it should be some kind of discussion that we have, but Dr. Kizner and I have talked about that, but I think that's something we as a board need to come up with how we want to support that, but also make sure stakeholders are aware, as well as education programs, which some of the schools are doing. So with that, why don't we, if there's nothing further, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of 12.02, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So you're not opposed? So you're aye also?
You made a hard stop for a second. You want to just hold the board?
Sure. Dr. Chase?
Aye.
And Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerback?
No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Ms. Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Yeo?
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion fails.
Let's move on, on to information item. This is about the purchase of firewall and internet filter systems from DALL-E computers to replace aging equipment. Are there any questions for Mr. Taylor? I assume Mr. Taylor would be our, any question? Yes.
I, I'd just like to know if we approved this tonight, could it get started earlier? Because we certainly do want to address aging equipment and increased bandwidth. The, the funds are already budgeted and it's, you know, fairly modest expenditure.
Yes, ma'am, we could accelerate the purchase of these by two weeks. I don't know that it necessarily dramatically changes our timeline, but anytime you guys want to move something from information to action for me is always appreciated.
So, I have a comment. I, I thought there was a certain amount that we, I can't remember what month it was, that we allowed Dr. Kizner, Chris Fulmer, there was a certain amount, I thought it was 120 or 120.
It's not, it's not this one.
Is this not this one? That they could go ahead and allow to?
I don't think it was up to 100,000. It was, I think it was 100,000.
Was it 100? I thought we increased it a little bit.
Seventy-five to 100, I think.
I think we increased it from 75 to 100.
Oh, I thought, for some reason, I thought it was 125, so I thought maybe this shouldn't have to come to us, but maybe it's on mine.
It's 225.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right.
Well, Madam Chairman, if there's no objection, since, since this is budgeted, it's, it's needed and it's going to provide a service to the schools, if there's no objection to the board, I'd like to move it to action.
I second. Right, it's been moved and seconded. The motion on the table is moving 12.01. Oh, sorry, 13.01, sorry, I have my thing on the wrong, up to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Moved to approve, moved to approve 12.03, approval of the purchase of firewall internet filter systems for DALL-E computers, from DALL-E computers to replace aging equipment.
Second. All right, got it in there. I will let you, Ms., I'll decipher who got in first. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead and.
Thank you.
Go forth and purchase.
Thank you.
To replace. The next item will become, will become 13.01. The reason this is on for information is that the plan at the next meeting on February 25th will be to approve the budget, the budget request for the school board. So we always put it on for information as well. I know it was appreciated, those who came and spoke about the budget this evening. Just wanted to give a quick overview, and if other board members would like to comment about the work session. Mostly what was discussed was about the salary. There was a modification to the initially proposed salary, salary scales that, for teachers that was offered. There will be additional information about the administrative positions and how those, those funds would be allocated. Let's see, there was a talk about stipends as well. There was also, it seemed, at least general approval to move forward about positions to assist in our elementary schools, especially our larger elementary schools, for something for us to consider. So I think I covered them, I think I'm missing something. Anything else?
Service scale.
Service, service scale, I think, okay. Just trying to give the highlights from there, so if I missed one, I apologize. But again, these are, so you may, for those interested, may want to review the, that's right, the teacher compression, and that scale has been modified. So for those who spoke on the one that they had seen in Dr. Kizner's budget, may want to review the new scale, which is, Mr. Fulmer, it's attached with one of the million attachments, correct, to this work session? Could maybe that particular?
One be updated?
Be, be put on, on the, a school board agenda for this agenda item, the, the compression scale, the, sort of like the thing that changed.
Updated, yeah.
Not to say that I didn't want to see 22 attachments, but that one, I think, may be of particular interest and would want to make sure people could find that one easy, easier, easier, yeah, okay. All right, any other comments on that? Okay, moving on, then information item, I guess now 13.02, if we probably refresh the recommendation to disband the school board's governance committee. I will turn that over to.
Ms. Yeo, yes. So one of the reasons we, or actually, I decided to put it on here because, as you know, that the committee has failed to meet regularly in the past year and a half. I think they met twice FY19 on 9/6/18 and 6/18/2019, and I think the third meeting was canceled. The committee had only met once in FY20 on 10/14/2019, canceling two meetings and only accomplishing the one meeting after rescheduling it. Additionally, no information or action items have been brought to the entire board by this committee in the past two years. That is our entire tenure of the school board. It is possible the lack of action extends even further back, I'm not aware of it. Since the committee starts, it has failed to bring a charter or bylaws to the entire board for adoption. Additionally, I believe, and that it is disrespectful to us to want the school staff to be there for the board to require attend unproductive and therefore unnecessary committee meetings, and for that, I feel that we should disband this committee.
Okay, any other comment?
Well, let me just say that, that a little while ago, somebody brought up the spending authority for the superintendent, and I don't believe we've actually passed anything on that because I think it was sent to the governance committee, and the governance committee has not brought anything back to us yet. But I'm not positive about that, and that's just sort of a vague recollection that I have. But I, you know, I, I don't know where the board wants to go in terms of direction for standing committees, but I think we should really be thinking about whether we have time for committees that don't actually meet. Feels a little bit like the governance committee has become the place you send stuff to die because it just doesn't come back. And so I just don't know why we have a committee that, that isn't functioning. And I'd be really interested in having perhaps a standing committee that looks at instruction as an alternative committee. So that's just sort of where I am. And, and I was a little upset a couple of years, I guess last year, the governance committee was going to bring the board a comprehensive draft policy that incorporates various state laws to look at board member conflict of interest. And that didn't really come, it came in the form of, of asking our chairwoman at the time to pass the gavel. And so I don't really know what the, the committee does. So, and, and since there's no charter, I don't think the committee knows what it's supposed to do either.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that these jobs are a lot more complicated than I thought, that a lot of meetings with different central office staff, a lot of meeting with schools. I think it's important that if we have committees, that they have a, a specific function and that they carry out that function. The governance and the rules and the bylaws and the things that we operate by maybe should be something that we make as consensus, and that it would be better to focus energies on a standing committee, do something more productive, like Dr. Chase recommended, an instructional committee. So I think it's worth certainly considering.
Can I comment? Madam Chair, I, we had an organizational meeting at our, my very first meeting, and in that organizational meeting, I kind of think if this was something that wanted to be brought up to disband, it could have been. But I have, you know, I have offered to serve on that seat, I was elected to that seat, and it's a committee, actually, that I've done quite a bit of research on since being asked. I had gotten information from Missy, of course, I was able to find stuff on my own. I contacted V S B A, they've let me know that there are three different school districts in the state of Virginia that have it, and so I've gone on their websites and have since got it. There's a lot of things that I think we have seen as a board that had, or I've seen as a board, and now I'm on to help participate in, and some of the situation, like what we just had, you know, my first meeting, I said, here I am, my second meeting, the superintendent resigned, and the third meeting, he's back again. So, but one of the things that I think, it, you know, there's a lot of value to this committee. I understand the, definitely understand the past situations, and I understand some of the backstory as to the whys of it. We do have a charter, it's never been brought forth. I've actually worked with the, looking at the other county, counties' information, and one of the values that I find in this governance committee is somewhat helping a board along, and our board needs some help to get along, both with superintendent, with each other, in communicating with public, and, and, and this is something I feel like a governance committee could certainly help with. There's an aspect of self-assessment on there. I mean, we would all like to say, I'm great, but let's be real. There's, we all have things that we need to work on, you know? One time, you're pushing something because of something, or you're responding because, you know, if something, if someone else did irritate, it's just helping us help each other, but it also is an avenue, even for the superintendent, as I was reading through some of the issues in other districts where he has an option, or the person has an option, of coming forward with grievance or problems and having, being able to say it, work it out, and get help. So that, you know, it's not, I can't do this and work with these people, I'm out of here, or, you know, I think I found something better, whatever, I'm not talking about you, I'm just saying, in general for a superintendent. And so I also feel like it's a chance for us to, you know, find weaknesses and get strengths as a board. And I really kind of feel that I'm in, you know, I, I hate to have everything that I'm excited about just like whip away from me. It's kind of getting old. It's my third meeting.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad you were excited about Dr. Kizner.
Everything makes me laugh, I have to say, everything has made me laugh. But I just want to say, though, that this is a, a committee that I would like an opportunity to serve on, work on, because it was brought up in the organizational, I was excited to do it, and, don't, don't whip it away from me, no, I'm just kidding. It has nothing to do with me, I just really feel like it's a way to better our board, you know, our superintendent has come back, we need to make sure that that relationship stays strong, you know, no yo-yo, and so that we can just, you know, continue to do our work, which, you know, I often heard, you know, educational friendly, you know, is what we need to be, and I think we all are, we wouldn't sit here. And I think that this is a way for us to kind of maintain that. And so I'd like the opportunity, that's all I'm saying.
Madam Chairman, the reason we have these committees is so that we can have more accomplished, and we can delegate to a, a number, a smaller number of our members, the, the task of, of looking at things, taking it on, and coming back to the board with a recommendation. Now, our committees do not have to be active all the time. I mean, when they are delegated something, or if there is something the board wants done, that's when the committees should meet. The legislative is a good example. I mean, that's a very intense committee during the time before the legislature meets and, you know, during the legislative session. I, I think that there is a value to this committee. Ironically, I think the, the cellphone issue during board meetings could have been asked to be a, a topic of discussion for the committee to come back and make a recommendation. There, there are other things as well, I think Ms. Randall makes, you know, a number of points. And the, the important thing is, it's not hurting anything if they're not meeting. It's not like it's taking up a spot, we can only have X number of committees. And, and I'd like to, I'd like to give it a chance to continue. I do have a comment on the instructional committee, though. I, I would certainly be willing to consider it, but I would question, you know, what would the point of that be? Because Dr. Kizner is the instructional leader. So if the board is going to consider, you know, delving into instruction, I would be very cautious as to what that task would be. Because I don't, I, I don't think that that's something that we want to delve into the weeds in, in terms of, you know, our, what do you, what do they call it, our lanes? I mean, we, we have our lane, and I, I think, you know, we have confidence in, in Dr. Kizner in, in terms of the instruction, but, you know, I'd consider it, but that one, I, I'd have to be, you know, really careful, you know, of what I would be willing to support. The governance, on the other hand, that's us. That is governing ourselves, and, and I, I think that's something we, we most likely need to do more of. And as Ms. Randall points out, you know, maybe this could help us. I know we have, we're, we're subject to criticism and, you know, with, with, with certainly some basis, you know, for not being able to, you know, work together as well as we should. And this may be an opportunity for us to, you know, to, to look at it, do some self-evaluation, and, and come out a stronger and, and better board, and more effective for the constituency that we serve.
I'll just make a, a broader comment, sort of going to my comments that I made in the, my board member comments. I think we as a board right now need to be forward-thinking. We, every day is a new day. This is an opportunity, hopefully, to move forward. I know that the committee is meeting on Thursday, and let's see, so at this point, there's now, no vote need to be taken. I think, though, looking forward is the best that we can do. We try and improve and, and move forward. As opposed to looking behind us, the rearview mirror is much shorter, or much smaller than our windshield, and I hope that we continue to move forward looking through our windshield. So I think when the committee meets on Thursday, we'll bring some information, and let's see what, you know.
I, I would like to respond to a couple of comments that were made by other board members very quickly. One, did you say that there are three other divisions that have this in the state of Virginia? Out of 134? That's how many divisions there are. So three out of 134, that's not many. So, so that's just one sort of, let's take that into context. I also want to mention that it's, it's nice that there. I also want to mention that it's nice that there is a charter, but if this board hasn't adopted it, then it's not really much of a charter. And then, Ms. Healy, you say that this isn't hurting the board at all to have this committee? I would argue that it has hurt us when the committee has failed with the tasks that it has been given because things haven't gotten done that need to be done. So, for example, back in June, the board was talking about the responsibility of getting the superintendent's evaluation done. Well, the committee didn't do that. Mr. McCosker and I called a special meeting in order to get that evaluation done. So, it does hurt the, it does hurt the board if we think that work is getting done that isn't getting done. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to let new board members try to make this committee function, but I think we need to not be putting our heads in the sand about how this board has functioned for the past two years, or should I say, has not functioned.
Can I say something, Madam Chair? I appreciate that, and honestly, the last two Fab meetings, Missy has put out the audio for that, and so I've been listening to that. So, again, you know, I can't speak for everyone that's serving on the governance committee with me, but for me, I'm trying to play as Liza, or Dr. Warner is as well, trying to play catch-up to, you know, things and processes and things like that, and so I feel like having listened, I can hear in the direction and the necessity, having Ms. Young come back and the way in that she reports. I think that all of that, but like I said, for the things that I've seen from the board, I hear your points. They're taken, they've been talked about, they've never been presented. I get that, but I think that, you know, there's a lot, I've been pulling the information, it's a lot of good information, and I'll be excited to bring it back. So, thank you.
All right. On that.
I just like to ask, I know the, Ms. Young and Dr. Chase are the ones that brought this forward. Are you at all willing to leave this on for information again and wait to bring it back to action until after the committee has met and come back and report it? Because I'd hate to put ourselves in that position.
Yeah, no, I don't know about Ms. Young.
That we're not even given an opportunity.
Right. I don't know about Ms. Young, but yes, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm willing to. As Ms. Randall and I, we spoke for, as you know, three hours and we talked about that. So, you know, she is excited about it, so was I two years ago about everything. So, poof, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we keep our excitement.
No, 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 we keep that excitement. So, we're good with that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. What we have is our next regular meeting of the school board is February 25th. I do believe, okay, there isn't another work session, there's just a work session before on the 25th, correct?
Fab has the.
The Fab has a special, right, but I just wanted to make sure that I did not miss, you know, something in there. So, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, I mean.